Meeting has begun. We'll call the members starting on.
Robert Packard.
Happy yellow here.
Crystal here.
Andy Nolique is here.
Bob Tessier here.
Ron Aller here.
Vanessa Price, Town Planner here.
Barbara Irvine.
Do we have any members online?
No, I don't. I don't think Donna's online. Nope, no.
We have a forum. We have six members. First order of businesses review and approval of the February 7th meeting minutes. Any comments or corrections? I move that we accept the meeting minutes as written. We'll call both.
Back good.
Yellow eye.
Crystal.
Andy, am I?
Tessie, right?
Ron Aller, I. All right, the second is staff updates from Town Planner.
Some quick things for the group. At our next work session, which is March 21st, the Conservation Commission will be there to talk about the wetlands. Discussion if we're going to move forward with that or not. And to discuss zoning articles to work on and any other planning goals that the board may want to work on. So keep things in mind if there's some things that are that we want to work on that we haven't discussed before. We will discuss the subdivision regulations at the work session on April 18th. CMA will be here. We're partnering with them to have them go through our regulations. They will do both, but right now they're starting with the subdivision regulations. And just give update for our master plan chapters for transportation land use. This past Monday, we had a meeting for our land use. The Monday before was transportation. They're nearing their completion. Just wanted to give everybody heads up that we'll probably have a public meeting as for our work session said for May 16th. And I think that's pretty much all I have unless there's anybody from the board that has any questions or comments about things.
Thank you. First application is TBS Construction. They're asking for. Is it for a continuous?
Yeah.
To April 4th. Anybody here speak to that?
I don't think Chris is.
Motion to continue that application 234-25-1-B-22-31 to the April 4th meeting.
I'll second that.
Happy yellow eye.
Crystal.
First.
Have you?
How's that rest?
All right.
Okay. Now, were you teaching me?
And we're going to go out of order because we have a. Another another item is going to be continued. So I don't know if anybody's here to address that one, but we'll we'll deal with that. This should be shortened. That's the 23 lot conservation subdivision. There's been a request for a continuance on that. Do they ask for a date?
And they asked to be continued to the April 4th meeting as well. Just they want to prepare some additional documents for the planning board.
I noticed the letter said April 5th.
Oh, I apologize. Yeah, April April 4th is the next, yeah, planning board meeting.
Discussions, comments? We'll make a motion that we.
Actually, I had a motion. Do we have any gentleman that I didn't? It's not going to hold for those.
Well, TFB is asking to be continued. Five A and then. And then this. Then Young Road, and that's all we have right now, but the applications aren't due until.
The 15th.
The 15th. So we may get more items, but at this point, those are the only two that we have for the April 4th meeting.
Any motions?
I'll make a motion to continue it to the April 4th meeting.
Second.
Happy yellow eye.
Crystal.
Andy, am I?
Tessie, right?
All right. A lot of people was, I think that was the one that was, we probably was going to get the most discussion. I see a lot of people. Anybody? You're free to leave if you were here to talk about that.
Yeah, we're here for that, but we're going to sit for a few.
Okay. We're not that entertaining, but that's fixed. Next one would be application. That'd be. Forest Landscaping Services, a request for temporary structures to be removed and permanent structures to be installed.
David, I'm just. Here representing the applicant and owner of the property of purchase. A purchase landscaping here tonight for a site plan approval. The subject parcel, which is built in. Using a listing direct that comes into the site. Was here prior back in 2019 for a site plan approval for what you see here today. This is an ad build plan. We can ride it with our application. There are some temporary structures on the property that you'd like to consolidate into two permanent structures. One being office and. Space for landscaping equipment to come in to maintain. And you'd like to take whole barns, put his trailers and some of his equipment and keep undercover from the weather. If you have a proposal, you can talk more to some finer details if you guys would like some more background story from the prior approval. Have your initial questions?
Just comments, not so much questions. This is on the staff and office. There wasn't a parking plan.
Yes, so we can use the existing gravel area. What is there now? So this is where he parks his trucks and trailers now. And we showed the location of where it was before the cycle here tonight in proposal. And that's where he proposed going to have his trucks and trailers parked. So when employees come in for the day, they take trucks out, they park there. And then when they come back for the day, the trucks are parked there and then their vehicles meet with them.
So is there any change in use as far as you're not selling now or anything like that?
It's literally the purposes to swap out the temporary group, a more permanent structure system. To just allow a bunch of use of the property. Separated structures here and here, those would be removed. This is where that office building and the maintenance building is, and this is where the pole barn is going to go. And everything on setting up is just either rental trailers, storage containers, soft sided buildings. Everything's temporary. Given the office, it's just a construction office. So we'll keep that on site during construction, just to keep as we move everything around. And then we'll get rid of pretty much all those temporary structures.
All right, that's it. I mean, you've got to have a parking plan. There's a table to show something parking space that you need. You have to show that.
Okay.
So that's a, it's a requirement. I think I looked at, I don't know how to categorize you guys, but. You know, depending on how you categorizes, you know. One space per 300, one space, but I think you need enough spaces. You showed four offices on your on your plan. And then you're going to have people, you know, come and take trucks and leave. So you're going to need parking spaces for them. And you're going to have to show that. Probably going to have to show a lighting plan to light those spaces as well.
We have the landing plan. We do have a lighting plan.
Yeah, your lighting plan and your renderings don't match. So you have to fix that.
Yes, we'll fix that then. Just by proposed condition, you have to show on the lighting plan. We'll show the proposed conditions.
Depending where you put your parking, you get, there's a requirement for, once again, for lighting and the aluminum levels that are required. So depending where your parking goes, I mean, you showed wall marked, which is fine. But if you put up parking, you need to light that. You may have to put a pole on if you want, so.
What's understood. We do have, we agree with the landscaping. Since we are far off the road, we would like to make addition of landscaping. It is a gravel area now. So they're looking to keep it as a gravel area.
How far back are you from the road?
It's a little.
It's over 300 feet, three to four feet off the road. This is all treated here along the driveway and this is wetlands. While really only that's cleared is the driveway coming into the site.
Okay, so that's a request. We have a question for that?
We do have a waiver request for that. The easiest way to see it is on the staff report on page four, but it isn't within your package. It's also, it should also be on there.
We also need hours of operations.
Yeah.
We did this on the event door.
We want that on the blueprints, the plans. We would put that, we put that in a notice of decision.
Yeah, we can put that in a decision at the board.
Is the new thing going forward? Does it, he's got to manage, he's got to comply with the table seven.
If I may answer Bob's question too, because I talked with Civil Works Steve. He's not here tonight, but he did ask about the parking when I mentioned the staff report and I said it's up to the purview of the board. If they would accept a waiver or not, because on the previous site plan, that was not addressed. So it's up to the board. He said he was going to provide parking calculations, which were not included in this plan set. That was on the phone conversation that I had with him, and I need to add that to notice of decision.
Yeah, there's no parking space in the plans. If there's not calculations. And, you know, I think that going forward, we'll prove something that's stuck to plot. To me, I mean, you know, make up your own decisions, but.
Yeah, question with hours of operation. Obviously, we have different hours of operation during winter operations, but we can just provide our standard, you know, seven to three o'clock. During, you know, 90% of operations. Will that be sufficient?
You should probably go bigger. You know, you don't want to fall outside. So I would, you know, would you say three, three is no problem because let me go later.
Okay.
You could probably go a little bit earlier. You guys are off of force.
Yeah. I just wanted, we'll provide something known on the plan. But some language about obviously during the winter hours, there will be some.
It'll be under notice of decisions. And so, you know, tell us what you want. Now, the reason I said your lighting plan and your renderings don't match. Your rendering show lights over all the doors, which is probably a good idea. It's a lighting plan shows. Lights in the middle of awkward walls, you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
Now, the renderings you saw, you show two fixtures on one side. You don't care what you're doing, you have a lighting fixture, which is probably better. So like on this one, you have one there, you have one there. So.
We'll make sure.
Yeah, just mention that.
As the applicant knows, I'll have them speak to it, but they have asked for a waiver from the drainage. So if you'd like to address that waiver.
Yes, we asked from the drainage requirement. Again, there's no change in. There was no previous drainage analysis done on the site as well. If we're going to utilize same gravel areas, you just take, you know, temporary buildings, including permanent buildings.
So there's no change in previous surface?
Uh, no.
Footprint is the same?
Yes.
The waiver's something. We just said, do we accomplish completely?
You have to vote the application is complete if you're. All the questions have been addressed for that part.
All right. We'll make sure we can do that. Okay. I make a motion that we accept application 270-26-RC-23-SR is complete.
It's depleted with.
Just saying it's complete. We can still require things, modify the plan, update the plan.
Happy yellow.
Crystal.
Tessie, right?
All right. For the record, Andy has recused himself temporarily. He's back, but Mr. Vog. What do you want to do next?
Public comment?
Oh, public comment. That's a good thing.
I wrote myself notes.
Keep me on track.
Yeah.
Any public comment on this application?
I see somebody online. Miss, are you here for this application that you'd like to speak for or against?
Yes, unmute.
If anybody is online for, to be unmute.
Carrie, now I close public comment.
You say.
She's still muted.
Open public comment again.
Miss, if you can, I don't know if I can unmute on here.
I don't think you can.
She's to do that.
Yeah.
Wait on computer. It's like a. Oh, she's gone.
Okay.
I think she's gone. I think she just shut off her camera.
Okay.
Closing public comment again. All right, we have two waivers, which we go to those next, Vanessa?
Yes, please.
All right, so the first one is what?
If you go to page four, here, there's flip notes. Are you, am I, line or number? Do you have a number? Wait a minute. Okay.
Okay, the first waiver request is for.
I can read it or you can read it.
You read it.
Okay. Department of Landscaping and Screening from Article 3, Section 3.5.10 of the Site Plan Review Regulations. To keep the natural vegetative buffer. Not granting the waiver would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant. And granting the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation.
So moved. Second again.
How could I?
Crystal.
Tessie, right?
All right.
The second waiver is the requirement of design mutations for drainage from Article 4, Section 4.7.2 of the Site Plan Review Regulations. Not granting the waiver would be pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant. Granting the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations.
So moved.
Second. Back it up.
Happy yellow eye.
Crystal.
Andy, am I?
Tessie, right?
All right.
The next would be if you would, if the board feels comfortable with issuing a notice of decision or if you want to see them to come back with the parking and lighting plan updated. But they're seeking a notice of decision for conditional purpose, seemingly.
I think that. I mean, to me, I think I'd like to see the park and the lighting updated or improved. Partially because. I look at the, I look at the table. I don't even know what the right number is. I mean, they, they don't, they don't clearly fall into a category. So. Maybe caution, yeah, I don't know.
Vanessa, can I say two cents?
Say again?
What are two cents? They already hit the business. They hit temporary. They're switching it. So where did they park when they were temporary? And they've already been, they already been before the board once.
Yeah, but they're asking for a new thing that they got to comply with the regulations. So they got to comply with the regulations now. And the regulations.
They have been anymore.
Are you number of employees changing?
Oh, not currently, sir.
But the use can change down the road, so they.
We'd have to come to forest for a change in use.
Yeah. I mean, I guess, have you guys looked at table seven?
I have, and I were unsure which ones used.
I agree with that. I agree with that. How many employees do you have?
Currently full time. It's anywhere from eight to 10. It changes seasonally. Just depends. Again, snow plowing operations can increase, but. A lot of our stuff is held offsite. Equipment's offsite. Vehicles are taken home. A lot of the stuff. So I own, you know, I own the eight vehicles. There may only be three there on any given night because employees are taking them home and so forth. A lot of my guys do have that privilege. The same with equipment. So it does, it's, it's ever changing, to be completely honest with you. The whole goal of getting this whole thing graded is to use that, use that lot as one continuous space.
Okay. Well, I think that. You know, you show four officers, you, you know, you, I think that, why don't we go with, to me, the only one that fits best is probably Cottage Industry, which says one parking space per employee. Does anyone have, has anyone looked at table seven and come up with a better suggestion of what category they fall, most appropriate for them? It's on page. Forty-six of the site plan review. And there's a whole bunch of categories there and they don't fit very well on any of them. But I'm thinking. One space per employee. Maybe the best fit.
The vehicles, there's no parking. It means they bring it back and forth. So how would that be a parking space?
Make sure with twelve spaces.
It would be his equipment.
What's number parking?
Here, eight. If we were going to have additional parking to show the edge for the, for the two employees, it would just be next to these truck locations. But then along this edge, that's where the parking would be.
So suggesting probably 10?
Yeah, so this, this seems sufficient for parking for 10 to us.
I mean, I don't know if they'd be garden farm supply.
We'll supply anything.
I know, it's like.
Certainly, it's a landing spot for us. You know, we do not have customers come to site, come to our home location. Certainly just my employees sitting and out. And truthfully, the longer they're there, the less happy I am.
Do you?
I like the cottage street that covers everything.
It's probably the most appropriate for this. I mean, there are a mix of things. They have.
It's got ten spaces.
Their faces, they got, you know, they, so I think that you could apply. The office needs four or whatever, you know, it's maybe. They, I think the office is like one per 300 square feet. You could come up with a formula, but I think. You go with cottage industry, it's one per employee, and I think that's probably the best way to go forward.
See, but they're zoning as a battle.
So he picked his vehicles back and forth. They're not going to leave a car there, right?
Well, if they come. They have company truck. They come and pick up the company truck and they leave their vehicle and they come back.
Doesn't somebody pick them up at their house?
Well, they might be, they might keep it at home.
Yeah, a lot of my guys have the vehicles that they, they maintain all the time.
But there should be one per employee, but yeah, they might, company meeting, whatever. Whatever they should.
Sure, there's times that they're concerned.
I think that that one per employee to me is. The most reasonable. Not going to say 100% complies with regulations, but it seems the most reasonable since I don't know what regulation applies to you. I would think that would be a reasonable compromise. But he. Deliver that.
I'm trying to figure out what in the zoning they could.
If you come up with anything else, that's, I'm open.
What they want.
But you have to write that too.
We should.
Be somebody.
I have their file.
They follow under this?
Would you consider yourself a landscape and nursery? Yeah.
Well, I think we're happy with the cottage industry.
For the parking.
Just because that says one space per employee. Probably the best fit, but at least it's.
Yeah, they're not selling anything, so nobody's going to be coming.
And then all the employees out there want, so you have customer comes and business. You know, they have a space for it, so.
So what, what they show is that suffice?
One, 10.
Or do you, okay.
We have to go eight here. Yeah, I mean, again, we plan on parking inside that pole barn as well. Again, there's going to be equipment. There's going to be trucks, dry storage before, you know, before a snowbed. Every one of those trucks is going to be inside. That's a 60 foot long pole barn as well.
Let's go with 10 and think that'll be good. All right, so we have, that plan is on the front of us. We don't, we haven't got anything yet. We don't have a lighting plan that can, that is compliant yet. Where does everybody feel, when you put that, put it in as a condition or do you want to?
That is up to the board to decide.
We can, we can ask them to come back with a.
You can ask them to come back or you can ask them.
Or have been on by no plans.
Condition. Condition.
All right. So we took care of the waivers. The conditions of approval. We want a. Compliant lighting plan. I mean, should we tell them what category they're in, probably low?
You can even, just say, you can even say like parking calculations, one person. Who was it? One, put the cottage industry.
We say 10, 10 parking spaces. Lighting is of this three, three categories. I would say lower medium is where you, you know, you would fall. They probably fall low, but you might want to do medium because low is pretty tight. It's, you know, the high and the low is pretty narrow.
So there were no houses adjacent to the parking area or anything, neighbors.
Right, right here would be Yankee equipment.
Okay.
And then this is another vacant lot that is mirrored.
I just was thinking if there was a house.
Completely all, the lights all around me.
So I think for lighting plan, a lower medium, if you comply with that, that would be good.
Yeah.
Check what we want to do.
That's to include parking. The parking spaces.
Yeah, that's, that's what they got to, they, they get wall units on the buildings, which I think is okay. But they're going to have to light over there with a parking space.
Okay, so make sure I put that in here.
I think that'll be fine, and they're not going to gravel. They don't require a gravel. I mean, they're required to pay, so that's okay.
Typically, we stack out like dark sky compliance.
Yeah, that's in the regulations.
The regs.
Yeah. Any other questions, comments?
So I can read the notice of decision with those comments added and then vote. Okay. For a conditional approval of the application. It has met all the town's ordinance regulations of the town of Barrington. All the precedent conditions must be met by the applicant at the expense of the applicant prior to the plans being certified by the planning board. Certification of the plans is required prior to commencement of any site work or recording of any plans. Once these precedent conditions are met and plans are certified, the approval is considered final. All of the precedent conditions need to be met within 12 calendar months to the day of March 7th, 2024. Otherwise, the board's approval of concern elapsed unless the mutually agreeable extension has been granted by the board. The conditions precedent are as follows. Add to the following plan notes. The two waivers that were represented tonight for the requirement landscape and screening from Article 3, Section 3.5.10. Requirement of design computations for a drainage study from Article 4, Section 4.7.2. Add the following to the plan. All owner signature, owner signatures, sites of engineer signature, professional land surveyor signature, architecture signature, wetland scientist signature. NHDES septic approval number. Do you want the parking calculations? Will that suffice? Or you want a separate plan as well?
I think we're just good with fence spaces.
Okay, do you want, but would you also like? Just as. And spaces?
Yes.
Okay.
A lot of nowhere involved. Show it. Well, they can add a note as well.
Parking requirements of. Ten spaces. Okay. All wetland sizes. And then we talked about. The next one will be the hours of operation.
What was that?
Six AM to six PM. Would that be Monday through Friday? Or would you want like seven days a week? I don't know what's your business.
Yeah, if, if that's allowed by you. Yeah, if, if that's allowed by you guys and that's within, and that's, I mean, again, seasonal plowing does dictate, and in times in the spring, if we get rainy days, we will operate on Saturdays.
Anybody have any concerns about that?
You know.
Seven days a week, okay.
Thank you.
Um, and then, um, let's see, right, another note here. For the parking requirements of ten space, okay, and the lighting plan to be updated with medium.
Lower, medium category.
Low or mean, okay, low or medium. And per, and proposed parking with lighting.
Yep, and also to correct the, uh, lighting plan so it matches design goals.
And correct lighting plan to match renderings. Gotta write that down.
Think about when you do the lighting plant too, is what traffic and where parking is to whether your building's part of the video studio. If you could put that light post anywhere along with that parking areas, but if you put it as I'm looking at it all the way to the left side or all the way to the right, it could cause some darker areas and it could only be people safe.
So that, okay. More, more.
Probably put in the middle, just to kind of over, uh, the whole parking area.
Okay. Um, any other outstanding fees to pay to the town? A final submittal of outstanding comments to the applicant from the town planner for site review shall be addressed. Prior to obtaining board signature, applicant shall submit three full-size copies of the site plans, one eleven by seventeen and PDF A file format with supporting documents as required in Article Three of the Barrington Site Plan Review Regulations with a letter explaining how the applicant has addressed the conditions of approval. Playing where she'll sign and date all plans meeting conditional approval. Includes the two full-size copy and the one eleven by seventeen. The general and subsequent conditions. Were no active and substantial work required under this approval has commenced upon the site within two years from the date the plan is signed. This approval shall expire. An extension not to exceed one year may be granted by majority voted boards as long as it is applied for at least thirty days prior to expiration date. A board may grant only one such extension for any proposed site plan. All other plans must be submitted to the board for review to ensure compliance with these and other town ordinances. Active and substantial work is defined in this section as being the expenditure for at least twenty-five percent of the in- infrastructure improvements, pardon, approval, approval, excuse me. Infrastructure shall mean for census, construction of roads, certain James improvements as indicated in the site plan for RSA six seventy-four thirty-nine. The applicant's engineer shall certify in writing that the improvements have been constructed as approved prior to issuance of certificate of occupancy. And just to note the current use, subject property apportioned. Um, and they must provide the town of Barrington Assessment Department current use map or other items to ensure requirements of the RSA seventy-nine A and New Hampshire Department of Revenue Administration rules or suspect. Thank you very much. We wish you the best of luck.
That current last part.
Don't leave yet.
It might. Because the building changed.
That's a notice of decision.
She asked me to
Voting on that notice of decision.
She did? Actually, it's
All right, I think a motion.
Is it?
Okay, we weren't paying attention. Who did you say?
Second.
Boy second, buddy.
And now you can vote for us. You can vote.
Hackett out.
Happy July.
Just go ahead. Any of mine. Justin, your right.
Alan, I. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Don't stall him, Barbie. Yeah, they're done. Like Ameron.
So they're safe for a couple. Get away from that.
It's not surprising, but. Um, all right, next, we have application two seventy dash seventy-one dash S R C dash twenty-three dash S I. Uh, yellow dog barn.
For the board, because I've seen those, the yellow dog, considering recuse himself.
Yeah. Anything I'm doing, he's gonna recuse himself.
Okay. Hear that?
For your name or exit the record and tell us what you want to us.
Holly Grant from the yellow dogs barn. Doing a little male one. Um, and we are proposing to add a gazebo outside of our front door. So they're ready.
Just letting you know the reason that they're here tonight, um, because they are a commercial property. Any changes to the site, they have to come back to the planning board.
Is any, does the board have any questions or comments? You know, of course I do. It's, it's lighting. Um, gazebo's right over your front door. Um, we're gonna have to provide some lighting in the gazebo and something like this.
So there's actually a light right above our front door right now, and the gazebo will sit right in front of that.
Right, it's gonna block the lights. You, you have like a walkway, a patio I'm seeing on the planes.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it's gonna, I don't see the lights gonna get there once you put the gazebo in the way.
Do you mind pointing it out on the, um, the site plans? And then I can pass on the
Oh, here. The one up above the doors here, and then we have one on the corner here.
Like three lights.
Mm-hmm, okay. Oh, actually, oh, there's four. There's one above. There's one right here, too.
All right. I'm getting taken back from. That's okay. Uh, we can pass one for everybody, but, um, one, two, three, four.
You know, how are those off the building? How high are they?
Well, those are, well, those.
It's the second story, right? That they're up on the peak.
One of them is. Yeah, of the taller part of the barn. There's one on the corner there that's on the second story. On the other side of the barn, it's a one-story section of the barn and it's much better.
Yeah.
If you can look at that plan, you can see my concern is that there's, the gazebo's gonna throw a shadow where it's gonna be a dock space, and that's the front entrance into the, uh, into the building. So that's really my concern. Um, but is there any way you can put a light in the gazebo?
Just string lights in there or something?
Yeah, it's just, I say Christmas light. I think as long as you can, like that. That's who was lighting my concern, so.
We just double check. I think if it's not a permanent structure, I don't think they, they have to change the light plan.
Yeah, but they, they're they gotta have a lighting levels appropriate for their use. And now the gazebo here, they won't have that in the, in the front entrance. That's the front entrance, but they gotta have lighting, like, it's
That's where the dogs go through, but people don't go through there.
Dogs don't know, remember that.
Right, but they do have night vision.
But you know, even, even, but drink the LED string lights or something like that, you know, it doesn't have to be anything fancy. There's just something to light that space, so I need the gazebo that's lighting. Um, other than that, I don't looks good.
Yep.
So can we add that to the notice of
Whoever is passing around my packet when you're done looking at it, I could have it back, because that's where I make my notes. Thank you. It's fine.
So you know what kind of lighting you wanna put in? Or you wanna must it be some general, so you do something, do something?
I like the like the Christmas light idea actually looked really nice for the gazebo.
Yeah, they have those, you know, the big bulb LEDs.
Yeah.
Bring those one in the middle, that'll be kind of a nice look as well as a nice even light.
Yeah.
That okay with you guys?
What would you, since you're the lighting guru, what would you?
Light bulb, bulb LEDs, the life of the gazebo.
Higher.
Large, big?
Large LED. They like that's involved, that's involved, it's clear.
The bulb. Geez, now we're getting clear.
Clear.
My mission's clear. Fight on the perimeter?
No, along the middle of the gazebo.
Middle.
Yeah.
Did you just cast light under the gazebo? That's kind of be looking unnatural.
Yeah. All right, do we, we set this complete or what are we doing?
You have to, um, vote if the application's complete.
All right. Make a motion. We accept application two seventy dash seventy-one dash R C dash twenty-three dash S R as complete.
Sorry, John, I'm going.
Let's take it.
Back it up.
Happy July.
Just go ahead.
Any of mine.
Tess, your right.
All right. Public comment?
Yep. Open a public comment.
Open a meeting for public comment.
Do you have anybody on the line that would like to speak for against the application? I see one person online, but I'm not sure if they're for this application. If you're here for this application, you wanna raise your hand or put yourself off mute? If not, we will close public comment. Mister Chairman, I don't see any, um.
We'll close public comment.
Yes.
Um, once you read the notice of decision.
Um, so I'd like to point out that, um, and the applicant can explain if needed that they have asked for a waiver request, um, waivers request that they, um, they already have a site plan on file and that the basically it's waiver from Article Three doing to use previously approved site plan. Yes. And, um, not granting the waiver would be posed an unnecessary hardship to applicant and grant the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit intent and the regulations.
So moved.
Who was the second one?
John.
Okay. Miss Agate, if we could vote.
Happy July.
Just like any of mine. Tess, your right.
Alan, right?
The notice of decision. This one's pretty short, sweet. Um,
So breaking speed.
Yeah. At the planning board at the March seventh, twenty twenty-three meeting approved your application. The approval of a minor site plan to add a twelve by ten gazebo with large LED clear lights along the middle of the gazebo. Okay. The applicant patient has met all torn town ordinances and regulations of the town of Barrington. Any changes to the site used for the operation of the business will require reapplication and review by the planning board. At the planning board, the board approved the waivers of the requirement to have all site plans be prepared and stamped by professional engineer, which is a waiver from Article Three to, to using a previously approved site plan. Thank you very much, and I wish you the best of luck on your project.
I move approved application two seventy dash seventy-one dash R C dash twenty-three dash R.
Second.
All right, you're late.
Thank you.
Happy July.
Just like
Any of mine.
Tess.
Alan, I? All right, so what's next? The voting permit?
Uh, yeah, the class six private road application for cat, it's a category two.
That is, was that, is that the ten percent part of that?
No.
No. Yeah. Is there anyone here to talk to that?
Um,
Looks like no.
I'm not sure if the, are you here for the?
Opera?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Dan's distracting over there.
Yeah. Move it up a little.
Just wanna explain your project. Lord, and introduce yourself.
Looking to just replace, uh, property that's there. Ranch style home, basically the same.
A little bit smaller.
It's quite small. It's gonna be smaller than the existing building.
Yeah, it's gonna stay, it's staying plot plan though.
Yeah.
He's wrong.
It's looking worse.
Yep.
White paper. You have a white paper?
Seventy at the top. Do you know that?
I did. I did.
Come by our money.
We check. Sorry, I didn't think this organization might, but.
Fill it fine, think about mine, many.
Thank you.
Yep.
Do you wanna follow, you know?
Cause they have that file.
You have some recommendation, you know?
Any, uh, questions from the board? What would be our action unless we send the letter?
Recommendation for approval for the category two.
Uh, this one is not really
Slapboard.
This, we, we send a letter to the selectmen. But the pool recommending that, uh, it is part of the default.
Mm-hmm. If you so. Think so.
Do you search? Any of you do that? Can I go to public comment?
Um, sure.
Public comment. Open for our comment.
Um, Daniel Air, I own lots. Cast of all. And I belong to association and done to work with it. And everyone knows what's going on. Appreciate him taking on this project. He is active member of the association, Dane News, so thank you for your money.
endorsement. It doesn't hurt.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions?
Anybody online that would like to clock for against this application? Just because I see somebody online and
Also a comment?
Yep.
Um, is anyone in agreement that we should send a standard letter to the support of selectmen? Wait.
Yeah.
Wait.
Yep.
Yep. Yes, we know.
So I can't tell you when they'll be on the next agenda, because I'm not supposed to promise those type thing?
Yeah.
Yes. But we will, um, I'll get over there this week to their office to put on however the agendas work, but
All right, I appreciate that.
Yeah, so basically we just send a letter of sporting project to the selectmen, then they have the fun and talk.
That sounds good.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Pretty painless. I needed to have to be here that long.
I already had to wait to the end.
Yeah.
All right, so where's my agenda?
You said for even an hour, I bet you been lost.
Don't teach that.
Kinda early.
Um, is there any other business?
Any other business anybody wants to bring up?
Yeah.
New name, play.
You son?
I tried to get you, buddy, and I was told by probably the selectman's office that you had to have Robert, but I agree, he should get.
I don't, I don't go by, I mean, it might
He does it.
Silly thing.
Not silly.
Let's go back in time to the early nineteen eighties, late nineteen seventies. When my father, Robert Hackett, who went by Bob, and now I was a young, um, young man going by Bob as well, too. Is being recorded?
Yes, yes, yes.
But so
You can talk about it after if you'd like.
We can close.
So back in the day, phones are on the wall, the phone rang, someone picked it up and they asked for Bob. They did not want Robert Senior, they wanted Robert Junior. When Robert Senior picked up the receiver, uh, all he heard on the phone on the other end was the kid party will be at such and such at this time.
You sure it's still a record?
Yeah, it's okay. Everyone involved other than me has passed on since, so can't prove it right or wrong. So at that point, instead of being Bob or Robert, I went to being Buddy. So that was prior to me becoming eighteen years old. And I am a also known as, so any federal documents that I fill out, I have to require that I put in my alias, which is Buddy.[1772.85] I've gone by Buddy as, uh, personal and professional for thirty-something years. So.
So why can't I have Buddy?
Oh, wait, tomorrow.
All right.
Um. Well, the administration office.
Unanimously, we. Unanimously, we voted for it, get his. And we voted a hundred percent.
Okay.
All right, that's, that's in the meeting minutes.
Want to make a motion that we can use nicknames and send that to the board?
We have a Bob, so why can't we have a Buddy?
We're dragging this out.
Yeah, but.
And I don't have the documents saying legally I'm Bob, so.
So, I don't know why you got to think about.
It's not like, it's not like it's calling you like Bob Dog or, uh, Ron Kid or whatever.
So I say Vanessa, take it to the select board and get it changed to Buddy.
We're looking for the staff to take it.
It, we voted Tiffany, because she's the one that.
Vanessa, can we, can you?
Because I put Buddy.
I will attend the select board meeting as a concerned citizen.
Okay.
We have a second representative here.
Do you want me to get a shirt made that says my name is Buddy?
I have been in the meeting up.
All right.
Any other, like, my, uh, my topic conversation is about to become marked, and it's, uh, very important to me.
It is very important.
So why don't you submit something in writing, and I can take it to the select board?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna put on an agenda.
Okay.
Because I, I don't want to be known as Rob or Robert in this town. For other various reasons.
All right, any other business?
So, um, this is important, so we have two new people who were recently, um, re-elected to, uh, re-appointed to this board. Bob and.
Two southern immigrants.
All right, speaking of the business.
Till nineteen. Years, that's nineteen years you signed up for.
Where's mine at? I don't even know.
Think twenty-five.
Anyway, um.
It's in the book, in this book.
Is it?
Yeah.
Yep, everybody has a furnished coffee room.
Does it say Buddy in there?
It does. No, it doesn't, I think it says Robert.
All right. I have to get the water.
The one I get.
And, and then I have a question, is this board chose a new, um.
Oh, chairman, chairman vice chair, yeah.
So I had with, um. Talking with staff and they mentioned after, well, since meeting was last night, but probably in April, we can select a new.
Uh, the same.
Chair.
Timetable is.
Usually after voting.
Gonna stick with the selection.
Yes. Unless you kick me off, I'm here for three years.
Um, I don't, I don't know if Donna is, Donna's probably not gonna discuss you with some of her husband's health issues. Um, but we do have five alternate. Positions available, if you know anybody that would be interested. You're, you're allowed to up to five. Mm-hmm, we only, we only had one, which was Donna. Uh, and she, I don't think she is gonna continue.
She's not, she's sent an email today that.
Previously, we had two opponents. When I first joined the board, we had two. So one or two is probably fine.
Did you get Jeff Brand back?
I talked to him at Planet Fitness, uh, like, two days ago. And his mother is still, you know, an issue, so.
Yeah.
He, I think he plans to come back, but not in the short term. So he will be on there, but, and I don't, I. I don't think he'd be interested in being an alternate, frankly. Um, he was the vice chair before.
Yeah.
And his preparation of meetings is. If I was doing as much preparation as him, I wouldn't want to be an alternate and not be able to hope, so.
Have we done, we probably should.
So, yeah, you know anybody that wants to be an alternate? Um, I think we could get, we definitely use one or two at least, uh, that'd be a good thing. Any other business to make properly come up be, before the board?
I have a question that's been, um, brought up at other, other meetings and different things that, um. We don't say the pledge of allegiance prior to our, our meeting.
Yeah.
Is there, is there any reason why we don't do that? Is, is, is the business of the, this building opened like in the morning with that, and it continues on?
We blackened the selectminder, selectminder.
The ZBA has chosen. ZBA has chosen to as well, it's not in the rules of procedure.
Something to do with a new term that starts after.
It's up to you if you want to amend the rules of procedure to do that. You know.
I think right now, my longest service, I remember, never, never had it, never done it. All time I've been on the board. So, don't know why.
But there being interest, is what you're saying, I mean, I can look and see if there was like some reason why you can't, I wouldn't see why not, but.
I think if somebody requested it, you could do it, like. Buddy is.
I mean, I'm, I'm gonna.
Right.
Now, you just have to change your rules of procedure and include it in there. Like I said, the ZBA.
Just one as a child, pledge of allegiance, we, we could always have a moment of silence if, or something like that, if you want to, I mean, it.
You kidding me?
I know, I bet people cut the flag down in front of my shop.
Um, I will, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
I just want to notice that when Ron was chairing this meeting, we haven't finished in less than an hour.
Yep, seven twenty-five is the.
Yeah, but you don't.
Thank you, if there's anybody on, online, we are the meet, the.